Mics on? Hey, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Just give me a moment to get to the agenda, sorry. All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of the
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
All second.
All right, we have a motion by Van and a second by Bruce to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries. Item three, public hearing portion of the meeting on the proposed 2024 village budget. So, public hearing is now open.
Hello, everyone.
All right, everybody knows the deal. State your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Okay, it's Tyler Norbert, 101 Second Avenue. And I have, I have a two-part question. It kind of doesn't work.
You have one in your pocket.
The first question is that I was just reading over the most recent audited financial statements and comments from the TPA firm Johnson Block. And in there, Johnson Block says, "Management has omitted the management discussion and analysis that accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America required to be presented to supplement the basic financial statements. Such missing information, although not part of the basic financial statements, is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board, who considers it to be an essential part of financial reporting for placing the basic financial statements in appropriate operational, economical, and historical context." And I guess my question is, why don't we have management discussion and analysis in the audited financial statements?
It's a separate state, it's a separate document. We'll make sure that that gets on there. I believe it's a second, there's two different pieces to that.
So that they exist, but it's not available.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Both of them are done by Johnson Block.
Okay, and how do I get a copy of that?
We can email it, or we can make sure that it's on the website.
Okay, great. And when shall I look for that?
Do you just want to send me an email and mail it right back?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the second part of my question is, you know, because that was missing, what are the biggest financial challenges for the village? And what initiatives do we have underway to address it?
Your agenda, I'll address the questions in public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a two-way dialogue in a public hearing, so you're welcome to provide comments and questions that you have, and then once we move to the to the discussion portion of the budget itself, we can address those concerns that you brought up, Tyler.
Okay, those are the two questions that I have.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one else, we will move to close the public hearing. We, do we need a motion to do that?
I think we do.
Yeah, you never had a motion to open it, but I would have a motion to close it.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I didn't realize that we needed to make a motion to to open for public hearing. I thought it was because it was a published agenda item, we didn't need to do that, so I apologize for my faux pas. We have a motion to close public hearing. Is there a second? I'll take Arvid's. We have a motion by Bruce and a second by Arvid to close public hearing. Is there any, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. All right, motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And again, I apologize for not moving to open it.
It's not necessarily necessary, but it does help.
Okay. Item five, any proposed amendments to the proposed 2024 budget? So I'm assuming this is discussion and possible action regarding.
Discussion and action tonight, yes. On that, the action will be in Form Resolution 2310, accepting of the resolution, accepting of the budget. This part will be the discussion part, the action will happen later on in the meeting.
Sure.
Part six. The first part, we'll look over revenues. We are currently at a balanced budget. Tonight, you don't have to make up your mind what you want to do with that $155,000, but we could have a discussion of how we want to direct that conversation. To get the budget balanced, there's two train of thoughts we can go down. We can do the borrow for equipment and maintenance for the $150,000, $160,000. Or we could take it from the general fund, which we've making up of money that we've had from land sales, closure of the TID, and other, other revenues that we might have. To get to Tyler's point, one of the biggest weaknesses facing our government right now, or our village, is a lack of general funds. We're currently around $100,000 in our unrestricted general fund. Best accounting practices is to have six months' worth of general fund activity. We're between $180,000 and $200,000 a month to operate. So you can see we're severely underfunded in our general funds. We should be around a million to 1.1 million in the general fund. Some of the actions that we have happening in the next year, such as land sales and early closure of the TID, will help us get up to the $600,000 to $700,000 range in the general funds. The general fund is generally used for emergency purposes that might happen. Say, for instance, an employee can't work for three months and need to backfill that position. Where does that money come from? That would have to come from the general fund. So that type of, that's what that's used for, or other capital events that were unbudgeted for. Because that's unrestricted cash that we can use for those type of projects. So my advice would to, in the future, to go down the avenue for the borrow. Like I said, though, that does not have to be decided tonight. We can just put that as, as listed in the current budget document. But since we're dealing with just revenues, I open the discussion to you to kind of look over the budget and where the revenues are. A lot of the revenues in the budget are pretty set in stone. We've gotten the numbers from the state. We know what our tax is going to be. So those, those are pretty well set in stone, but the big discussion for you guys to have either tonight or in the future would be, how do you want the gap to close? Because currently, we have that $155,000, $160,000 to figure out how to fund it.
Well, just working off your comment about the general fund balance being so low, and that's kind of like our savings account, I would hesitate to fill this budget gap, revenue gap, with general fund balance. I'd much rather borrow a modest amount of money for $155,000 that we can levy for next year, which is like an infinitesimal change in the tax rate, and not dip into that fund. I'd like to use those land sales and other things we get going on through the next year to build that fund balance. And I think if we keep digging into it, it's like if you use your savings account to pay off your credit card every month, great, you don't have any credit card debt, but you also don't have any savings eventually. And we are so severely restricted on revenue. To Tyler's point, that's our biggest challenge financially is levy limits. It severely restricts how much property tax can grow, no matter what expenses do. Expenses go up 10%, and your revenue goes up 1%, you're not going to survive long. And that's where we're at. So I would much rather borrow the money and pay it back next year and not dip into general fund balance.
Do you have any numbers that you can show us of, like hypothetically, if we went the general fund route, what those balances would look like at, you know, what we're expecting for the TID, what we're expecting, or what numbers you're using to?
It was a vote of seven, it's between 600 and 800, depending on how much we get back from the closure of the TID. Because some of that is going towards the housing that we talked about two weeks, two, three weeks ago. And also, some of the land sales are not final, final. And some of them also have to be used for improvements within the road too, because keep in mind, we still have a big question overheads of what to do with Simmons Drive, and what to do with Ridge Road. As we're currently developing Ridge Road, we might have to use some of the general fund upfront, and then reimburse ourselves through the TID to pay for that too. So there are other avenues where that money might come into play. If we continue down the development path that we're going in Ridge Road currently, by the quick trip out there, that, that road change would come sooner than later.
I guess I, I agree with the need to build the general fund. I, I think that it is very dangerous to have, you know, a checking account with not enough in it to cover an emergency is not a healthy financial position, and I agree with that. I, I balance that view against, I think, the, the fact too, that if I think about my own checking account, that we, you know, if, if my checking account is below the level I want it to be at, which is a real financial problem, you generally aren't in a position to go to your employer and ask them to close that gap for you. And building a checking account backup is something that takes time. And it takes discipline, and it takes all of those things. And I think that that philosophical view on my part is, that's where I'm having the most trouble with the borrow, is that I think the village finds itself in this situation, and I, I, I mean, there are lots of good arguments that I've heard, and that I'm sure we will hear tonight, about why the balance needs to be brought up. And I agree that it does. I think I'm just trying to work through the best way to bring that balance up. And on a way that, that maybe we can do it without having to ask taxpayers to help close that, close that gap. And it sounds like the land sale TID combination that's kind of on the, on the floor right now would move us in the direction, barring calamity, which is a, a constant risk for us, would move us in the direction of helping to heal the general fund, which is, I think, moving us in the right direction, while also trying to maintain the posture that I, that I just outlined. So that's kind of how I'm looking at it. I'm partial to the general fund idea, but I'm, I'm open to hearing what others have to say about it.
One other thing I left out too is, our bond rating is directly impacted by the amount of general fund we have too. The less we have, the more adversity affects our bond rating and our ability to borrow. So that's also an added factor to it.
Yeah, and if you think about it, your checkbook analogy, if you find your checkbook balance is too low, sometimes there's expenses that are discretionary that you can cut, and that helps build that checkbook balance. We don't have that option in the village, because there are so many things that are fixed costs. You know, we can't cut back on employee salaries, we can't cut back on benefit costs. And the cost of materials to fix things and keep things in good shape don't go down either. And we don't have any control, because we don't have enough buying, buying volume to really impact any sort of discount.
Well, I, I, I hear, I hear that point. I mean, I agree. I can decide not to go to the movies. You know, that, that's an easy decision to make in, in my analogy. I do, though, think that over the next year, there are things that we can think about working to improve. Under the new shared revenue bill, there are innovation grant dollars available, if we can figure out what those are and, and make, and a concerted effort to make sure that we get some of those innovation grant dollars. That's something that's in our control. I think that there are, I, I would have to imagine potentially other land sale opportunities that we should aggressively consider, that give us the double whammy of putting money in our pocket and reducing the amount of stuff that we have to take care of. That's a, that's a twofer. In addition to, I know I waxed philosophic at the last meeting about health insurance and thinking about, I know there's been a lot of good work that was done to get us in a better spot this year, but are there other things that we can do there? And that's, that's just my thoughts, that's not everyone else's thoughts. And so I, I guess I see the balance, and I, I see the general fund project as a multi-year one that's going to require more than a single year of borrowing to truly address. And, and the, the general fund issue is a function of our underlying, as I see it, structural problems in our budget. And I think that some of the stuff that I just outlined, I think are, are promising at a minimum for how we can try to think about our budget and hopefully make it a little better over time.
Next year and beyond, but for this year, they're not really options, because you can't build this budget based on what we hope we can capture or do in the future.
Well, I think that, I guess, I hear that point. I mean, I, I think that we're talking about building the budget on a TID closure and some land sales that are, the TID closure, it's going to happen. The land sales are reasonably likely. And, and it is, it's, I, I, I don't dispute that my idea is a little more risky of a, of a path, but I've also tried to articulate why I and prefer, I prefer that one.
Okay. Yeah.
Do we have any numbers to show in 2025 how this $155,000 borrow will affect significantly or not significantly? It's a very small amount, and I think a lot of people get stuck in, for lack of a better word, a selfish view of how this affects me as opposed to how this affects our community. Do we have any numbers to?
We can give you an estimate of what it was going to be in 2024. If we, if we were going to the borrow and pay it out in '24, we can give you a ballpark, right?
What's, what's the tax levy?
So if we increased our tax levy exactly as it is today, if we increased it by $160,000, it would be an increase on people's taxes. If you have a $300,000 home, it would be an increase of $15.24 for a year. And a $200,000 home, it would be $10.16. A $150,000 home would be $7.62. A $100,000 home would be $5.08.
Right. To me, that is something that seems reasonable. However, I know that there's a lot of people in the community that are very vocal about fear of taxes being raised, and I don't want the headline to be, "Village borrows, raises taxes," even though it's such a small amount. So is there anything that, if we go down this route, that we can do to try and appease the community that is fearful of taxes rising?
This levy increase would be on next year's taxes, so in terms of 2024, it would have no impact on the debt levy.
Right.
Be in 2025, it would be.
If in the packet, there was this mill rate sheet that says what things look like right now.
Yep.
And we're going to show an increase in taxes this year. So, because the county levy went down, and so that's, that's where we sit today.
Van, Phil?
And I want to acknowledge one thing, and then two. Neil is right about the innovation grants from the state. However, we have not been given any guidelines or framework for those grants yet.
To apply for them.
Or what they are yet.
Oh, okay.
They haven't released any criteria. They just said they're going to release them.
Say, concept at this point.
Well, I mean, they're going to release guidelines, and they'll be available, and it's, it's conceptual only in the sense that the legislature's mandated it, and we wait to need to find out. But I, I take the point that they haven't released those guidelines.
This is for the municipalities under $50,000. I don't know, we can get rid of $57,000 by turning off the streetlights. And I, that's how I'm looking at this. That's a paging their, you know, stuff.
I thought it was my time.
No, it's telling EMS texting and stuff. Call or something. It's coming through the apps down there. Yeah, I don't like the borrowing the money either. But we're looking at, yeah, for a hundred, $300,000 home, it's about $134. It's going to go down.
No, 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 no. That's the decrease that's going to go through. This budget gets approved, that's a decrease in next year's taxes for that house. And if we borrow, it's another five or 10, 15 bucks a year.
In 2025.
In 2025.
In 2025. So.
So I don't like to borrow the money either. But we also have to consider that we did promise to be as frugal as possible with the budget. I, I just don't want to see an increase myself. I know we you know, there's just obligations that we have, that people require services, and they expect things to be done in the village, and it's really, it's really difficult cutting more. So I'm just going to add a crossroad to now as to how much is it to borrow the money, how much, you know? Yeah, I, I don't know.
Can we wrap that borrow into the
So the borrow would not happen, the borrow would not start happening until April. We got the timeline today for our CIP. It would happen the same time as the CIP borrow to reduce administration and processing fees. So, that's what I was saying when I let out tonight. We don't have to decide tonight about how that one, that $155,000, $160,000 is decided, as we can always, you know, change how that, how we fill that gap, whether it's from the general fund or through that borrow. But it's a good, it's a good discussion I had today.
I agree with Bruce. I don't see any reason to take the money out of the general fund. I'd certainly rather borrow that little bit of money and, and then have that money in the general fund in case a emergency comes up. Because they do come up. At least in my business, anyway. So, and, and like you say, over the long haul, especially and with the taxes, I own a $150,000 condo, and that would increase my taxes by $7 or something like that. And then I can flip that, so. I probably wouldn't even know it. But anyway, I realized in the paper, you know, they tend to not get the get it on down the paper correctly, so.
Well, they've got a different objective. They're trying to sell papers, so controversy sells papers. We just need to do ours, John.
So I, I, I'm, I'm, I agree with the borrow.
It's, one thing we can do is manage the information that we put out about it and try to counteract any attempts to sensationalize it or, or controversy stir. You know, and we've got a website, we can put out there, we're going to, you know, this is going to reduce it. It would take you five years to eat that reduction up at 10 or 15 bucks a year. So I don't see it as a huge impact to anybody. You know, it was a much bigger impact several years ago when we had to digest this building and borrow that big bunch of money. And we had the 37% tax increase. And people, people complain about that, and I, I think that's fine. Everybody has a right to complain about it. I got hit with it too. You know, it's not like we're exempt from this. Everything we do that affects your property taxes, we suffer too. You know, we're not living in some bubble where we're exempt from all this stuff, and people, I don't think, keep that in mind. Act like we're just arbitrarily deciding things, and it's not really that way at all. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox. I'm going to say I also prefer to keep the money in the fund balance, so I, I think we should be looking at this borrow. I think we should, I'd like to ask Devin to explain clearly one more time. We have a balanced budget. It's, what is it going to do to next year's taxes? And we want to do the borrow. How's it going to do that?
That's what we're discussing about there. 2025 is going to be a whole different set of circumstances, as we have some revenues coming off of both of our own charges in 2025. Asking to forecast a year out with some of our lost revenues, about seeing what the increase is going to be, is going to be a tough challenge. This budget I'm looking at, a one-year, helping us out this year and to help us out in 2025. That way, if some of these lost revenues cannot be made up in from 2024, their 2025 budget, that the general fund can be there to help support that. Because there are some revenues that will not be there.
What are the revenues?
There's a few that were listed as revenues from transfers from water and sewer that will not be happening anymore because they go away.
And they're going away because revenue
Because they paid us back.
The general fund loaned the money.
It was an interfund loan, intergovernmental loan of them. So there are a few areas that I'm, that optimistically hoping won't be as bad. But it'd be nice to at least then we have a healthier fund, a healthier fund balance there to possibly for 2025. Like I said, I can't forecast that far out without knowing what the growth is going to be and some of the other factors that go into that too, as we just saw a big increase of shared revenue. I don't know if that would happen again. Or if they go away with levy limits too, all of that plays a big factor in things that.
It's still my heart.
But so it's, trying to forecast a year out of that information would be a little tricky.
Well, I'm not asking you to forecast a year out, I'm asking you to say what this does. This decreases the tax bill how much?
Ours does not decrease the tax bill. The tax bill has decreased because of the county, the county law in there. So the overall picture is that taxes are decreased because of the county. That's, that's what that one is, so.
Okay. And then, the following year, we think.
It will be, it will be that, we were using the formula for this year. The mill rate could change in a year. Once again, so I don't, I can't give you the exact answer as to what it's going to be, but we can give you the, the best guess of what that's going to be in the 2025 taxes. Which is the $5 per $100,000.
Yes.
That's using this year's rates. So it's going to be close into that ballpark area.
Yeah, and you remember, we're not the only participant in this little tax dance.
I know, I just want to make sure.
The county has a piece, school has a piece, and the technical institute has a piece besides us. So we can manage our budget and keep everything balanced and flat. And the other three go off the deep end, and all of our taxes go up, and we didn't do anything. Just like this, the county went down, so the tax rate goes down, but we didn't impact that, we didn't make that happen. But I think we ought to take credit for it.
You should also be taking credit for the increase in the size of the budget from 2023 as well.
Yeah.
Because it is bigger than last year. I will vote no to any budget that includes a borrow. I am staunchly opposed to it. I will not pass tax increases to our taxpayers when we have another option. So I can go into a lot of details on it, but that's, that's my standpoint. I know that Devin's talked about the fact that this is $150,000 that the budget is sitting and using. The standard is to keep the general fund at a certain dollar amount to protect against potential issues, so that you have cash flow available. I don't see $150,000 against a 1.1 standard being that big of an impact. And to be honest with you, the position that this village was in five years ago is very different than where we are now today, and in five years from now, we should be in a much better spot due to debt payback. I challenge any credit that anybody sitting at this stage would take for a decrease in taxes for next year. That is absolutely due to a surplus at the county level, all right? They were obviously able to reduce their mill rate due to the fact that they got a bunch of cash, so I get that. Our budget is bigger, and make no mistake about it, there were some choices made in that resulted in that. I challenged a few things and was outvoted in some of the challenges that I had. I understand the reasoning behind some of the choices that have been made with this budget. I think that it's reasonable to assume that people can expect a pay increase every year. However, it's also reasonable to assume that if you don't have any money to give people, then you may not be able to offer that. So there's two sides to every coin there. But yeah, I am, I will vote no to any budget that includes a borrow.
But we can pass this resolution without specifying how we're going to cover the $150,000.
Yes, you can.
Yep, yeah, the resolution can be passed with the revenues also dependent on TID closures, land sales, other things. It's just anticipated revenue.
Yeah, because you could, you could go back to 2024 and change how you're funded to.
That's correct.
Is there a penalty for paying off that borrow?
The borrow will be paid off in 2020, in 2025.
Yeah, there's no penalty. It's a one-year deal. Oh, we would have to figure out before we do the borrow for the CIP whether we want to go this route or something else.
Yeah, it's got to be done before, um, before March.
Before April, yeah. Yeah, in layman's terms, we would have to figure out whether or not we're planning on increasing taxes in 2025, when we do our borrow for the CIP. That's the correct way to word it.
Because tonight, you can pass the budget with general fund covering the gap, and then in January or February, you say, we're, we decided to go with the equipment and maintenance borrow, and then go from there.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I get it, it's risky, but like I said, I mean, I get it, it's risky, but like I said, the razor that we walked on in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, that's nothing compared to where the bill is currently sitting now, so. I'd rather run with a tight lean budget and maybe not a lot of money in reserve, deal with the issues as they come up. This, now is not the time to fatten the general fund if we don't have to, so that's right. Any other discussion on revenues? Any issues with expenses in the budget?
I'll take out the expenses if you want. Uh, we're looking at a three point nine percent increase over our expenses in last year. That being said, um, within, within renegotiations, both unions have accepted a, a five percent increase for, for next year. A lot of that was due to the fact that last year when inflation was ten percent, they only got a three percent increase with that. This year, the CPI is around, was it six, eight, seven, I believe? So it's still below the, the house of inflation. With that being said, we've also made sure that all department heads have, have kept their budget as lean as possible, but any increases, any increases, uh, we've talked about and covered in previous meetings. Uh, the big one that was cut was the part-time police budget. Other things that we have found out since then too was that when we looked at the police, I mean, the fire, uh, wages, it had not taken account quarter three yet, so it was under recorded in the first budget workshop meeting that we corrected last two weeks ago, the other meeting that, yes, they're on track for the number that was budgeted. So that, that number was correct and there's nowhere to cut from there. Other areas have, have seen their increases due to general inflation throughout the whole world. Uh, cost of services have gone up, uh, the cost of equipment and oil and materials have gone up too. So a lot of these controls are really outside of our control that everyone else has experienced. So that's kind of a quick rundown of expenditures. We have all the department heads here tonight for any questions that you might have. Tan is here too and she can go through the document, um, for any department that you wish to see or questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions on expenses?
Nope.
Okay, we get to move on then.
Well, if that's the case, go ahead.
So we moved to item six, which is resolution twenty-three-ten. I can read it. All right, resolution twenty-three dash ten to appropriate funds for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four and to authorize the levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property within the village of Osceola. Whereas, Osceola Village Board held a public hearing on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three on the twenty twenty-four village budget as submitted by the Admin and Finance Committee pursuant to subsection, I'm sorry, section nine dash two C of Village Code. Now therefore be it resolved by the Village Board of the Village of Osceola to make the twenty twenty-four budget appropriations as shown and described. Now therefore be it further resolved by the Village Board and the Village of Osceola to levy a tax on all taxable property within the Village of Osceola for the year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four to the fullest extent of the law and for following purposes. General fund, debt service, property tax levy in the amount of one point five nine seven oh eight five million. Adopted the twenty-ninth day of November, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three-ten.
We have a motion by Bruce and a second by Bill to adopt resolution twenty-three-ten. Any discussion on that motion?
I just wanna confirm that this is in reference to a budget that includes the borrow then.
It includes, uh, it includes revenues as stated. The borrow does not have to be part of that process until next year.
This is just basically.
We have choices.
Next year.
Correct.
This resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, is to say that we're certified as an ultimate factual.
Yeah.
And if you wanna think about that hundred and fifty thousand, think about it as coming out of the general fund at this point. We'll decide in the next few months where it really comes from. So it's still a TBD, but we gotta cover it now.
Yep, good clarification. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post say no. Motion carries. Okay, uh, item seven, the board may consider going into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen eight five one C to consider employment promotion for compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This pertains to twenty twenty-four administration staff. So I will entertain a motion to go to closed session.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
I will second that.
Motion by Bruce, second by Van to move to closed session. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Marsha.
Aye.
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 Myself, aye.
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 All right, guys have it. Motion passes. We are moving to closed session. Devin, for this one, do we just end the stream and then restart it?
I just, I changed two different cameras just so it goes away.
Got it.
As long as everyone turns their mics off.
Yeah, just turn the mics off then. So we still got sound being picked up, so how does that work? Wonder if it's laptop. I bet it is. Yeah, we'll just mute the laptop.
Okay, which camera angle do I need to go to now, Devin?
North.
North window?
Yep.
Great, okay. Was there anybody in the hall?
No.
Oh, they went home?
Oh, hell yes.
You taking notes then?
I'll hold.
On the...
I'll pass all on security.
It's really just the vote to come back to open session, so, okay. Uh, future agenda items and updates?
Oh, uh, who made the motion?
I, uh...
Van?
I... If you want to write it down.
Van and Bill.
7:22. Motion by myself, second by...
I mean, that might disappear for some reason.
Here, you can have this one that Kerry gave me.
Second by Bill.
Second by Bill. He sounds just like Neo.
And the 7-0.
7:22.
7:22, you want to call this?
Yep. Okay, Neil?
I'm...
Anything? Bill?
No.
Van?
Nope.
I have nothing.
Nope.
Well...
Skate park update for December?
Uh, talk to Devin, let's get it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
I'd love to hear it.
Light up, light up Osceola Saturday, make sure you make an appearance if you can.
Get some hot chocolate.
Yep. Great, all right, well, we will adjourn then at 7:23.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Every time there's a weekend event here, I have another... I'm getting kind of...